Could silence our phones and then let's stand and recite our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Phyllis, if you could do roll call, please.
Craig Kooshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Here.
Scott Murray's absent. Wiley Surt.
Here.
We all given a chance to read the minutes of the last meeting, 11-1? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to start. First item on the agenda is Ron Story's here from the Redevelopment Commission with a report for us. Welcome and thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Ron, before you get started, just to make a matter of record, Mayor Dean Rickard was unavailable and he's out of town on business. And so we have Matt Dyer serving as president of Pro Tem for City Council tonight.
Still moved?
Say it.
Is Ron's mic on?
Yeah, I turned it on earlier.
Okay.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Story.
Thank you. As by law, every year, the Redevelopment Commission needs to make a report to City Council. And I'm going to have to wing part of this because the guy who really knows was called out of town with work, which is Tim Ellening, our representative from the school board, but nonetheless, a very important member of the board. TIP revenue for 2021 includes lease payments from the lost parking lot of $1,299. It was $226,107 and change. Our 21 expenditures, and they're listed out on the ones, so I'm not going to bore you with all of them. But anyway, we spent $110,328, leaving the fund balance at $569,283.16. Now, all this money comes from eight taxing districts in the county with a total distribution of $224,808.91. That was in 2021. Our 2022 budget target was $25,000 for career technical education and workforce development, $75,000 for this 13th Street improvements, renovations, $40,000 for second street improvements, $25,000 for capital projects, and $10,000 for operations. That came to $175,000 or 93% of our anticipated $189,000 in revenue. The 2022 TIP revenue through 10-5-2022, which includes the lease payments from the lost parking lot of $649.50 for the first two quarterly payments, was $113,770. Our 22 expenditures from January 1 through October 5 was $49,356.50 for the 13th Street design and construction and $1,207 for miscellaneous operating costs. We have a fund balance as of 10-5 of $632,488. Looking forward to 2023, which we're really excited about, target areas for Decatur Redevelopment Commission permission statement are light, underutilized land, barriers to meaningful development or renewal, creation, retention of jobs, growing population, improving quality of life, and expanding and diversifying your tax base. Our goals of renewal of Second Street and 13th Street, renewal of attractive industrial park, and growing population through increased housing development and job creation through CTE job skills. Our 2023 budget target is $50,000 this year, this coming year, for career technical education and workforce development, $150,000 for Bowman Street 27 renovations, $100,000 for capital projects, $50,000 for professional services, and $10,000 for operations, coming to a total of $360,000. That's 103% of our anticipated $300,000 revenue for '23. This includes use of a previous fund balance. Any questions on that part of the report?
On your, under the goals of renewal attractive industrial parks, what is meant by that?
We had, during the course of last, or this past year, we had an industrial park study done by Austin, and they recommended some things that we do out at the industrial park to kind of spruce it up a little bit, make it more attractive to possible purchasers of the land. There's some cosmetic things, cleaning, I think some of it was cleaning the hydrants.
Like entrances to it?
Yeah. Yeah. We don't, the Redevelopment Commission owns the first two lots as you come in, and that's where, if anything is done, it'll be primarily right there.
So, do you guys have anything in mind yet, or that's just something that's?
Just something based on?
It's going to possibly happen this next year.
Right. We have had, and I will get into it here a little bit on the other part of the report, we did have an inquiry about two lots that the Redevelopment Commission owned, one of the two lots.
Okay. I was looking at the revenue on, you know, 2021, and then we're in the fourth, or starting the fourth quarter, also the first two quarters. It appears like the revenue is down from last year.
Yeah, a little bit.
Is there a particular cause that you guys know?
What was it, Phyllis?
We don't have the December in there yet.
Oh, right, but that would be a big jump. 113?
I'll have to look. I can tell you why, like, sorry.
Unfortunately, I'm not the one who prepared this one, so I don't have all the answers to this one.
Okay.
This was Tim's, supposed to be Tim's part of the program.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Questions, I'll try to answer them.
I can get that information for you, though.
Okay. Thank you.
I also see you did projected budget for 2023, the career technical, you doubled that. Again, do you have any specific things you're going to target?
Well, we've been working with the school system on a CTE program. Let me find my notes here. It's a program that the school system is putting out and... Okay, it's for the CTE classes and materials at Belmont High School. They requested $25,000 this past June, and we're looking at if they need that again because we want to work with the school system.
Sure.
To develop those job programs for students at Belmont, hopefully retain some of it.
Right, absolutely.
Good.
Other questions, or we'll allow Ron to go to the next part of his presentation?
The other part is our fiscal year activity from the Redevelopment Commission. And going back to January 21, we hired Austin Consulting for the industrial park study, and it cost $25,000, and they came back with a number of recommendations, that some of which are feasible and some less so much. But then in March 2021, after several months of studying contract proposals, the commission hired Butler Freeman Seifert for contract number one, design work on the 13th Street and Bowman intersection, stabilization at a cost of, estimated cost of $14,000. In contract two, 13th Street and Bowman sidewalk extension at an estimated cost of $34,000, plus another contract, signalization cost of 30, estimated $35,000. All the funds have been allocated at our November 2020 meeting. And then we also purchased a 75-inch screen television for the high to be used for training and teaching programs at a cost of $1,800. In August 2021, we received and reviewed the final copy of the industrial park study. Again, there were some things that, like the cosmetic work at the industrial park site, and some recommendations for another industrial park location, which we...
Do you have a specific area, or is it just under investigation?
We have no specific area. I mean, they listed two things, we've not said anything about it, and they are outside of the city limits, the two areas, so we are not actively pursuing that. We will maybe at some time down the road with the Economic Development Corporation partner with them on that, but that's not going to be one of our, at this point, not one of our interactions. In September 21, we reviewed the 13th Street feasibility study and project schedule regarding phases one, two, and three of the pedestrian improvements, 13th Street and Bowman Streets. And then in October 21, we heard a presentation for request of funding for members of the Merritt Center Board of Directors for Monies to help with the sprucing up of the center for the open house, when Dr. Ken Barrett Johnson, the chancellor at IG Tech Community College, was coming in, and they wanted to paint some walls and spruce up the grounds and get some help getting some tables and so forth for the Merritt Center for the open house. Then in December of 21, we heard an update from Jeremy Gilbert, the operations manager, regarding the 13th Street project, sharing that a design meeting had been held earlier with VFS regarding phases one, two, and three, and shared that the permits were in progress, that we also may need right-of-way to be purchased, and he noted that all, all in all, the work is progressing, but it is going to be behind schedule. Then in February of '22, Jeremy gave us an update regarding, again, the status of 13th Street being done by VFS, stating they had completed work and submitted their work to Endot after reviewing the nomination of a supplemental contract from VFS given by Gilbert. The commission approved the supplemental contract that cost of $4,500. Commission authorized Jeremy Gilbert to solicit sealed quotes for the construction upon receiving from this from Endot. Then in March of '22, the commission was advised by Jeremy that the right-of-way permits from Endot for the 13th Street project were granted, and also reviewed project schedule for VFS regarding these improvements. Excuse me. In April of '22, the commission was presented with an offer to purchase one of two lots that the Decatur Redevelopment Commission owns in the South Industrial Park. After discussion, it was determined that the offer could not be accepted directly, that the commission must have the property appraised and requests for proposals must be advertised before any action could be taken. At that point, wheels were set, motion to begin that process. In May of '22, after bids for the 13th Street and Bowman Act project were opened in April, the commission was informed that only one contractor bid on the project, and that was after Jeremy had to extend the project's scheduled dates. And even with this accommodation, the bid came in three times more than the engineering estimate from VFS. Since the opening of the bids were rejected, Jeremy had talked to another contractor and was waiting for a quote from them. We also received the appraisals for the two industrial park lots, and at this point, the commission authorized Clerk Treasurer Phyllis Ripright to run the legal notice of request for proposals for the properties. In June of 2022, after receiving no proposals for the properties in the industrial park, the commission was advised that after 30 days, they may enter negotiations for the purchase price of the properties. And we also received a request for a grant of $25,000 from the North Adams Community Schools for CTE classes and materials at Belmont Senior High School. After presentation was followed, questions and answers carried, the commission approved the request, noting it wanted to build and maintain a strong working relationship with the North Adams Community School System. We also received an update from Jeremy Gilbert, operations manager on the 13th Street project, having received this from another contractor. Costs were still higher, but they were more reasonable at this point. Phase one, which was the street pedestrian improvement at the southeast corner of 13th Street and Bowman was $87,902. Deceanic contractors for the signalization work came in at $42,480. And phase two, for the sidewalk quote for the northeast corner of 13th Street and Bowman, $95,906. Plus, there will be an additional cost of seal and paintwork for $3,084, for the total cost of $229,373.18 for work on those two corners. And we have approved, and as you've probably seen by now, work progressing on those two corners of the intersection. In July of '22, no bid had been offered for either industrial park lot, and the commission made an offer based on the earlier appraisals, and then we received an update on the 13th Street project. Then August of '22, we received word that the party that was originally interested in the property, industrial park, had received a counter offer and decided not to take any further action at this time. We also approved the budget to be sent to City Council. And then in September of this year, Jeremy Gilbert, operations manager, shared a reconstruction meeting for the 13th Street and Bowman Act project to be held on September 13, and that would kick off work for phases one and two, which would likely start in early October. And then we approved a request from City Council for $100,000 to be part of the city portion of funding for the five-point spread. So as you can see, we tried to be a partner to a lot of entities in Decatur, all for a hopefully better quality of life. We felt, you know, two years ago, we did a 13th Street feasibility study in Winchester to Winchester. After this has all come in, we did target Bowman Street to be the first and most important intersection to be worked on from a safety standpoint because of the amount of people that cross from the apartments that are on 450 north, I think that is, that come down. They are, we're actually walking in the street in all types of weather, and cars were aiming for them sometimes, so it seemed. So with the sidewalks being, that will hopefully make it a much safer location. So, and then with the schools, like I say, we want to keep on maintaining that partnership with them and help build some growth there. Any questions on the stuff that I just presented? I know it's lengthy, but hopefully I didn't glaze anybody's eyes over.
Any questions? Not Ron, thank you for your time and service. We certainly appreciate the partnership and those willing to serve in this capacity.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank Jeremy Gilbert for the amount of extra work that he's put into this project. He's done a lot and has really helped this project move along. So I'm referring to the 13th Street Bowman project.
Good.
One quick question.
Yeah.
Was this Butler Freeman Seifert, was their quote off over $120-some thousand? And we paid that? And they're engineers, and they get paid to know what the costs are, and they were that far off? We're not using them again, are we?
No, we were going to a different company.
That just blows my mind that someone can be paid to have an idea in that profession and then be that far off. That's just...
We were very surprised when we opened the bids.
I don't know how you, I don't know how you can run, yeah, how can you run a business and be that far off and still get paid? Blows my mind. All right, as long as we don't use them again.
No, we're not. Thank you.
Noted. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have some guests from our newly formed, I'm sorry. Okay. Hold that thought. We're going to go to our public hearing, and being that it is advertised to be at 7 o'clock, we're going to move to the public hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Ian Razzo, who will lead that portion of the meeting.
Well, at first, we need to actually suspend the council meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend council meeting.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to open up a public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, so we will begin with the public hearing. We have a petition to vacate a public alley. Joe Johnson III, on behalf of Alexis Ochoa, had petitioned the court, I believe on September, petition the court, petition, common counsel, on or about September 26, and technically, a hearing on the matter should have been held within 30 days, but by agreement of the petitioning party in the city, that public hearing has been extended to this evening. So, Mr. Johnson, do you want to review your petition, or do you want me to go through the petition for council?
Either way, does, does all the council members have a copy of petition and the exhibits?
It's been, I know it's been presented to council, but the portion or the alley that is being petitioned to vacate is located just off of Elm Street between lots 509 and 510. So it's an east-west running alley, and Ms. Ochoa is a property owner that runs adjacent and contiguous to the east side of, or to the west side, and then Arnolfo Garcia Jr. owns the property along the east side of the alley.
It's a 12-foot wide section, 32 feet long, it's an old alley that's, has grass overgrown now, and she's, she's lived there for several years, and has maintained it by herself, and she's actually own the property now, but just over a little bit here now, and has continued maintaining it, and I don't see the property. And I, from what I understand, the city doesn't have any use for the property, so that's what...
So it doesn't really provide access to others?
It does not provide access to anything.
Okay.
As part of the hearing, we wouldn't want to make a record that notices have been sent. They were published in the paper. And then also that certified mailing with a copy of the petition was served upon Arnolfo Garcia Jr.
Still moved? Second. Motion is second. All in favor? Anything else you want to add, Ian, before we?
There are some sketch Tory grounds that for council to consider, and we'll just make a point to have those covered. If I can get to my, if I can get to my statue here.
It'd be like an alley going into the parking lot behind the property, or running behind here?
It's fenced off now. It used to be this old trailer park, and it's fenced off now. It just goes to another alley.
Ms. Ochoa, have you had any conversations with Mr. Garcia? Do you know if he's present here tonight?
No, he's not.
Okay. Okay. To your knowledge, did he have any issue with vacating the alley?
Yeah, he said he doesn't want it.
Okay.
Doesn't want the alley, or doesn't want it vacated?
He doesn't want his portion of the alley, wants it vacated. The intention, he's just going to quickly need his portion of her after, after it's vacated.
And then?
So it's an area that was used by the city at one point in time and hasn't been in some time?
Correct.
Yeah. It's been redeveloped, the whole area?
In the alley, you had the alley surveyed, and that was added by Bill Lemhoff, and that was added and is part of the petition?
Correct.
Okay, and that has created the legal description? Contained within the petition? And vacating the alley would not affect any rights of public utilities or any existing easements that would be contained as part of that, is that right?
That's correct. Not, or an alder would affect anything, maybe, but that.
Okay. And the alley is actually already contained within the plat of Cook's second addition to the town, now city of Decatur, Indiana, as it's shown in the recorder's office for Adams County, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public present who wishes to speak for or against this petition? Hearing, no one. It would be appropriate, does council have any questions?
Well, we have, we have a motion, don't we, to? You don't do a motion in a public hearing?
You don't do a motion in a public hearing. We would have to, we'll make, we'll, I made it part of the public hearing to know that we have those, but then within the, within the meeting, we'll make that a matter of record.
I just want to confirm, we are talking about the property right behind the car wash? Is that where your house is located, or?
It is, but it's further down a little bit more.
What lot are we at? Do you have a?
Yeah, I'm going to have to survey.
I'm going to have the original survey if it's needed for any reason.
Can I see it, please? Right. And? Where are we at here? Oh, this is 11th Street. Okay, so we're like this, 11. Gotcha. Is the city Elm Street Garage back in here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what you're saying. And we're talking about vacating this?
Mm-hmm.
City garage is back in here. This is the alley we're talking about. Okay. This is 11th Street.
115.
If no further public comment, I'd say that we close the public hearing. I make a motion to close the public hearing. Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion that we reopen the council meeting.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd first entertain a motion to make a matter of record that notice has been published in the Democrat related to the public hearing for tonight.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then also make a matter of record that a certified mailing was issued to, there's two adjoining property owners... two adjoining property owners. The City of Decatur is one. We have actual notice, so no certified mailing was sent to us. But the second was Arnolfo Garcia Jr., and a certified mailing had been sent to him with return receipt requested.
So moved.
Second. Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
With an alley vacation, it would be necessary to introduce an ordinance that council approves vacating that portion of alley that was described within the petition. And I do have that prepared and ready for introduction, and would entertain a motion to do so.
Okay. And this would be, what, 2022? Okay. Then make a motion to place ordinance 2022-20 on its first reading by short title only?
Why don't we make a motion of second?
I'll second.
Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 2022-20. An ordinance of the common council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which vacates portions of an east-west alley which was dedicated in the Cook Second Addition to the town, now City of Decatur, Adams County, Indiana, as shown in Plot Book Two at page forty-two in the office of the recorder of Adams County, Indiana.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2022, I'm sorry, yeah, 2022-20 on its first reading.
I'll second.
Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Make a motion.
Craig Kosha?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Wiley Sir.
Yes. Make a motion to place ordinance 2022-20 on its second reading by short title only.
I'll second.
Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 2022-20. An ordinance of the common council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which vacates portions of an east-west alley which was dedicated in the Cook Second Addition to the town, now City of Decatur, Adams County, Indiana, as shown in Plot Book Two at page forty-two in the office of the recorder of Adams County, Indiana.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-20 on its second reading.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Craig Kosha?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Wiley Sir.
Yes. I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2022-20 on its third reading for our December 6th meeting.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, Ms. Ochoa, with regards to ordinances and the finalization of this, the final readings would be at our next, at our next council, regular scheduled council meeting on December 6th. And at that time, the council has the ability to approve and finalize this ordinance, and that would complete vacating the alley. Council and the mayor will sign that. I'll attest to it. It will be recorded. And at that point, the city will vacate ownership, and that would transfer, be the equivalent of transferring to you and Mr. Garcia. And so, your portion of the alley will be from your property line to the center line of the alley for the length of it. And then, Mr. Garcia would have the same. And if he's not interested in ownership, however you guys want to work that out. But it would be recorded as you having, you know, essentially an additional six foot from your property line, if it's a twelve-foot alley. Okay. Alright. So, we'll, I'll get ahold of Mr. Johnson after next meeting, when one's final approval's done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
So, we should have to go buy off him, or have him quickly get a term?
Next on the agenda, we have some guests. The mayor had made common knowledge that he wanted to get more youth involvement with the City of Decatur, and has created a mayor's youth council. And we have a couple of members from, I believe, with us this evening that are gonna
Yes.
Introduce. So, Jamie Gephardt is gonna take over at this point.
Yeah, so, we introduced last time that we are starting the mayor's youth council. We have a few that were supposed to attend tonight, and they are sick. So, we have Mason with us tonight. I'll let him introduce himself. If you want to say the grade that you're in, and what got you interested in being part of it.
Yeah, my name is Mason Martinez. I'm a sophomore at Belmont High School. And I was interested in seeing how the city council was run. And I wanted to do my part in bettering the community.
Great. True.
Yeah, so, we have Victoria here. She's here again tonight, too, also. And we are going to start meetings in December. So, you guys can start seeing some of the council members here every single meeting from now on.
Nice. Good. Great. Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
Okay. Next, we have appointments. The city council makes appointments to various boards. The mayor makes appointments to various boards, and some of them are up for discussion. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Ian. How do we do that?
So, I think it was brought up last month that there were various appointments that are on an annual basis. And I believe council was looking at consideration for both redevelopment commission and plan commission?
BZA.
BZA?
So, let's start with the Board of Zoning and Appeals. Nominations from the council.
I'd like to nominate Chris Schoeff. He seemed to seem interested in it, and he's out in Deer Run area to give some reputation, representation to that area of town. I think would be a good addition to the BZA.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Right now, it looks like that would be, right now, Dave Haggard is the position, or the post that is up for appointment for the following term. So, we have a nomination for Chris Schoeff. Is there, is there any other discussion, or any other nomination?
I'll make a motion to approve that recommendation.
What's like, make a motion to close nominations?
That would be appropriate.
Okay.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
Motion of second to close nominations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. So, at this point, we have a nomination of Chris Schoeff. We'd entertain a motion to appoint him for the twenty-three term, twenty-twenty-three term.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Actually, that's a four-year appointment.
Four-year.
For the term, I'm sorry, for the term beginning in twenty-twenty-three. Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
And that was BZA. Chris Schoeff. Okay. Four-year term. Next, we have redevelopment commission. Council makes an appointment to that board as well. Is that a four-year term as well?
No, that's just one year.
That's a one-year term for redevelopment commission.
And council, currently, it's John Russett and Larry Ish. And both did say they would serve again, but it's up to council if they want to appoint them or not.
Nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to make a nomination of Jason Byrd.
Is it Byrd, B-Y-R-D?
B-I-R-D.
Just like the bird.
I believe so.
B-I-R-D.
Other nominations?
Make a motion to close?
I'll second.
There are two, there are currently two positions that would, are two posts for redevelopment commission that are needed to be filled. So, we've got current.
I'll start with this one.
I'll make a motion to nominate Craig Russett.
I'll second. Motion of second to nominate Craig Russett. All in favor?
Aye. Any opposed? I'll make a motion then to close the nominations.
I'll second.
Motion of second to close nominations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair of council? Mayor?
Do we need a motion to appoint them, or, we just had nominations, I think, didn't we?
Yeah, we did just say.
Those were nominated, we need motions to appoint them to redevelopment commission.
I'll make a motion to appoint those nominated, two nominated for redevelopment commission.
I'll second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
To nominate?
To nominate.
Or to appoint?
Approved nomination.
Approved nomination.
And then, I have the plan commission, city council.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't have it.
I am, I must have put my damn on. Okay.
Okay. So, councils made their appointments to these boards. Thank you for those wanting to get involved with the city to serve, and thank you to those who've served previously. It takes all of us to keep this city going. So, we thank you very much. Next to me, agenda, everybody. Says ask Ian. That's what we're ready for?
No. Well, mayor already, he told me that he wanted to reappoint Ron Story, Max Miller, and Jeremy Free to the redevelopment commission.
Would be for his, make a matter of.
So, we need a matter of. I'll entertain a motion to make that a matter of record, the mayor's appointments to various boards.
So moved.
Second. Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Official.
Alright.
So, are we ready for this yet?
So, Board of Works, Kurt Witty presented appraisals, or made a report regarding receipt of appraisals for both 710 Shermeyer Street and 138 North Second Street. Do you want to come up and discuss that a little bit, Kurt?
Since the beginning of the year, the city acquired two properties, 138 North Second Street and 710 Shermeyer Street. At that time, the city decided to basically revamp or remodel 138 North Second Street, get it structurally sound and weathered. 710 Shermeyer, they decided to remove the building on that lot. It was beyond repair, and had holes in it. You could park a Buick in this thing. So, the building had been removed. I think it was council that we came in front of, and council had given the building department the assignment of gaining appraisals for both properties. And we came in front of Board of Works tonight to make a matter of record that we did receive, that was yesterday afternoon, two appraisals on each property. The first company to give the appraisal was McChesney Real Estate and Appraisal Services, Inc. And the other appraisal company was Wayne Cruz Real Estate, Inc. We've provided both Board of Works and council with those appraisals. This time, I would suggest we take the next couple of weeks to review those appraisals, and then see if December 6th meeting, if we can come up with some kind of a game plan to what we want to do with these properties. Sell, launch them, keep them, develop them, whatever you need to do.
I appreciate that. At this time, I think it'd be for us, in order to get the information and absorb it and make the right decision, I think it would be, I would make a motion that we table this until our next council meeting to review, take the time to review the appraisals and make a good decision.
I'll second that.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Kurt. Doing what we asked you to do. At this time, we go to our department heads to get a report. We'll start with the assistant to our public works, Matt Schultz.
We, it's been a very busy month. And we've got all the carts packed out, with the starting. Tomorrow will be the third leg of our trip. Our truck will be, our new truck will be going all this way. The recycle truck went Monday, Tuesday, we're gonna pull it off for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and let them do it the old way. Still use your carts, we have a tipper on the back of our old garbage truck, but we just come. Since our recycle lot tripled, we might just kind of police it a little bit, and make sure that people are recycling, and they're not throwing trash. Police license still good. The guy's been doing real good. I think we're ahead a lot, or ahead of the game than we were last year, so. About all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Kevin Hackman is our utilities director. Anything? Kurt Witty with our building department?
As of last week, TG Concrete started the sidewalk extension from Creek Street down to Pickley Repair. When they finish with that, they will jump onto the west side of 11th Street and pick up at Failing Love, and take it all the way around Kroger Shopping Center. They will also go to the opposite side of Fulman Street, and from, to Evergreen? Village Dream, Village Dream. To, they will run the sidewalk from Village Dream to the parking lot of Richards. Directly across from the sidewalk in front of, I believe it's Lobos. On both sides of Fulman, they will have ADA ramps for street crossings at that location. And we will be removing a section of sidewalk in front of Lobos, creating a landing and a ramp for ADA access. So, this will coincide with what they're doing in a section of 27 in Fulman. So, we anticipate having that done by the end of the year.
Good. Thank you, Kurt. Bill Carpenter with our water department?
I'm Doug.
Jeff Sheets, our fire chief?
Our application portion of our hiring process is closed last Friday. We have approximately ten applicants. Two of those are for paid-on call position. So, eight career applicants at this time.
Jamie Gephardt, our community coordinator?
This Friday and Saturday is the Main Street Christmas Open House, and there are about thirty businesses to be seen. So, that's Friday night, and then Saturday, pretty much all day.
Okay. Weather's supposed to warm up a little for this weekend. Hopefully, we get good participation downtown. Our police chief? Our police chief, Lanny Corral?
This Saturday is our physical agility and written tests for our two open positions. See what happens from there.
Okay. Anything from the public this evening? Several members of the public, thank you for coming, you're always welcome. If not, we'll move to council, anything additional to bring before the board tonight?
First of all, I'd like to say thanks to the fire department. November's been safety awareness, they've been scheduling classes with the fourth graders, I believe it is. I was, I had the privilege to visit that last week, I think it was Thursday at noon, and went through the safety and the firehouse and got to participate with that with the kids. I think it's a super great thing, the kids are learning and they're taking it home to their parents, fire alarm safety, the whole safety deal about the fire, in my opinion, was very interesting, and I just wanted to say thank you for running that, chief, and I thought it was very interesting and entertaining. Also, if you've noticed on our downtown streets today, they started changing over the flowerpots from fall to Christmas, so keep an eye on those, I think Jamie Gephardt was out taking some pictures today, and I'm sure she'll post those on Facebook. We've got Santa Claus House coming up for the holiday season, that should be here in the next few days, when we get the Santa Claus House, we'll start decorating for that. So looking forward to the holiday season and the travels for everybody. Thank you.
And along with that, the tree lighting ceremony would be Sunday, the 20?
27.
27, November 27.
Good. Counselor, anything else for us?
Oh, counselor, Tyler, did you have anything?
I'm good.
No, I'm good. I'm talking enough tonight.
Quick treasure, Phyllis?
Just to report that DLGF did approve our budget for 2023.
Yay, yay. That's worth celebrating.
Yes, it is, we're celebrating. Also, our SaaS valuation went up about $30 million, which is huge, that hasn't been that high since 2006, which lowered our tax rate by two cents, so that was good news, too. So our tax rate for next year will be $1.16, for $100 of the SaaS valuation.
Media, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion, pay the claim?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?